Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for our school improvement plan meeting. We have a little bit of board business before we get into the presentations. Our first, I'd like to read a statement from the state. Good evening. It is now 5:31. Governor Inslee's proclamation 20-28 in response to the COVID-19 outbreak temporarily suspends portions of Open Public Meeting Act. The part this proclamation requires that all attendance in an open public meeting not take place in person but occur remotely, including the board directors and the public. Our meeting this evening is conducted via Zoom audio webinar. And I'd like to call to order board members that are here. So just say aye and I'm an aye. Ginny?
Sorry, I couldn't get to my mute here.
Rob?
Here.
Julie? Here. Rachel?
I'm here.
And Mike?
Here.
Oh, and Lori? Okay, so now we'll read, I will say the pledge of allegiance and you can silently join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next up, we need to adopt the board agenda. Do I hear a motion for adoption of the agenda?
Director Grunwald moves for the adoption of the agenda.
Sorry, Rob. Sounds like it's been moved and seconded. I will now do a roll call of your vote for aye or nay. I'm an aye. Ginny?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
All right, it's been passed and accepted. Okay, next up, we have the board consent agenda.
Director Grunwald moves to set the board consent agenda. Sorry Vic, don't pause because then I start.
I'll second that.
Victoria?
Yep.
I don't see a board consent agenda on the agenda.
Oh, remember Vic, get to the superintendent.
Where it says, it actually says motion to approve board consent agenda, but the number three says superintendent, so it is actually for the board consent.
Okay, so the consent agenda, we have a motion and a second. Okay, I'm an aye. Rob?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Ginny?
Aye.
Okay, great. Now I'm going to recess the meeting for a couple of seconds. And then we will move into our board workshop, which will be centered on school improvement presentations. Okay, so I'm bringing us back in from recess. So first up is Danny from Evergreen High School. You're on Danny.
Great, well, thank you very much. And I want to thank all the board and Superintendent Merlino for the opportunity to speak. I can give you guys kind of an update of where we're at and where we're going. You know, obviously COVID has been difficult for everyone, especially as pertains to school, but at EHS, we're kind of using this as an opportunity to springboard our focus on equity. We, as you probably know, we put together a school equity team made up of teachers and classified staff, as well as administrators, and that's led by Charlie Tumulty, and he's one of our associate principals. And that team has been working to put together and facilitate monthly professional development sessions around equity. Most currently, they've engaged our staff in writing their own racial autobiographies as a way to help staff members talk about their experiences with race. And I also want to thank, before I forget, Clarissa Hightower and the whole CNI team, not only for helping us kind of put our professional development plans together, but also for just kind of being a sounding board for our team and bringing us the courageous conversations, professional development that we've all been able to engage with. Excuse me. Beyond that, we've, our instructional coach, Lacy Yu, has been instrumental in our development of our equity work. Lacy facilitates a regular book club for additional professional learning for our teachers and actually all of our staff. Around our, around grading, we're using the book called Grading for Equity by Joe Feldman. The group has begun implementing new grading practices that have provided students with more opportunities to demonstrate their learning and find success, which has been especially important right now during kind of remote learning and kids having to adapt so much. And then lastly, one of the things that we have noticed about our staff at Evergreen is that we don't completely represent the diversity of our students. If you look, if you look at the diversity of our staff compared to the diversity of students, it's, it's not even close. And so diversity in hiring is one of our top priorities. Not only is it a visible gap, but, but when we talk to students and parents, this is one of the things that they also bring up as a barrier to some students' success. Basically, when, when kids see themselves in the makeup of the staff, they feel more comfortable to learn, and that's really what we're all about is, is finding ways to improve that for kids. And so that's, that's been a huge focus for us anytime we're doing hiring. And luckily, we're, we're able to make some hires here pretty soon, at least at the classified level. Beyond our equity work, we've also been focused on our classroom instruction. Together with our teachers, last year, about last year, we came up with three guarantees that we, that we're able to make to all of our students every day, regardless of the class they're in, for every lesson, every unit. And those, those three guarantees are first communicating the why and, and the meaning of the lesson or the unit. Basically, that's, that's where our focus on meaningful learning experiences comes into play. Secondly, is modeling engagement. So teachers actually modeling what engagement in the material looks like for kids. And then focusing, having, having lessons that are focused both on, on literally literacy skills like reading, writing, thinking, speaking, listening, as well as SEL standards. Because of COVID, obviously, we needed to adjust to what our implementation looked like just because we're, we're in remote and we're not, we're not actually in person. And so yeah, especially when you talk about engagement, that looks a little bit different online than it would normally in the classroom. But we've been able to use instructional rounds that we've been doing daily as a way to identify and celebrate teachers who demonstrate those three guarantees. And we're, we're actually trying to increase the leadership capacity of our staff. We've, we've kind of tapped them to do more presentation of their best practices in their classroom during meetings and trying to, trying to build that capacity in them so that it can really be kind of a grassroots movement for our staff. Going forward, we're working hard to, to increase our, our enrollment in our high rigor courses by our minority populations. If you look at that, that report, or if you look at, at the enrollment report of each class, there's, there's an obvious disconnect between our high rigor courses versus our basic level courses. And so we're, we're working hard to change that. We've really started doing that right now around forecasting time. And so we're, we're hoping for some success around that. And then additionally, we're, we're continuing our work around freshman success and developing supports to ensure on-time graduation, help kids meet their post-high school goals. And so again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to share and also let you know that we can't wait to get our kids back into the building. We're really excited about that. And you know, we think that's going to make a big difference.
Thank you Danny.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Allison from Cascade Middle School.
All right, hello everyone. I wanted to start by also saying thank you to the board and Superintendent Merlino for the opportunity to share a little bit about Cascade. And we're very proud of our students for persevering through this new learning environment and the way that they've adapted this year. And also, I just want to say really grateful to the Cascade staff for both their flexibility and commitment to learning new things and supporting kids in any way that they can. So at Cascade, we have, we have some core building values of care, belong, and learn. And so we use those three values when we are talking to kids about things. And we also kind of bring that through in terms of everything we do. So our professional development, our staff learning, all tries, we try to, we try to cluster it all under the umbrella of care, belong, and learn. So our first goal in our school improvement plan this year was around care, and that is to improve our SEL practices in class. So last year, we had a homeroom where every day, all of our students were getting the same SEL lessons. And this year, we've transitioned to teachers teaching individual SEL lessons in their classes. So our mid-year results show that 93% of our teachers are intentionally teaching the SEL lessons in their classes, which exceeded our goal for the mid-year point. One of the things that we do at Cascade is we use a PBIS reward system. So we have a PBIS coordinator who coordinates activities and rewards for students who are meeting our school standards of care, belong, and learn. And some of the successes with this program this year, our, our teachers have awarded 183,442 PBIS points this year. So students are able to spend those points in our Cooper store. They are able to go to holiday sales, online reward events, different things that they can do to positively engage with our school community. Another thing that we're doing under SEL is we hired a new LAP counselor right before we went, we went to remote learning in March. And that counselor is exclusively focused on SEL support for our kids. She targets smaller groups, grade level check-ins each week, lunch bunch, and then connects students who need additional support with outside counselors. Our second goal, belong, is around equity. And so we have developed a lot of different opportunities for both our entire staff and then smaller groups of learning around equity this year. So the way that we structure our leadership teams at Cascade is that all of our teachers elect into different leadership teams. This year, one of the leadership teams that we added was around equity, and this teacher team and some administrators works on leading the professional development around the courageous conversations topics and related full group professional development. So this group has shared data, started conversations with all of our teachers around equitable grading practices. We have also used the Joe Feldman book as our resource for that. In addition to our large group work, we had two volunteer book clubs this year. We got this, we got this by Cornelius Minor and Culturally Responsive Teaching by Zaretta Hammond. And these are smaller group opportunities. These are volunteers. And we're trying to just build our collective capacity amongst our staff to learn and to lead. So we also were awarded an ESD grant this year around inclusionary practices. And so we've developed an inclusionary practices leadership team. That's 14 staff who are focused on analyzing our current systems and planning for next year's professional development around all different types of equity. We've also started a new food pantry and closed closet this year, and we've tried to improve our community outreach and our communication with our families. To date, the set team this week had 116 students on campus. So we're trying to do home visits and reach out and connect to the students who we know need additional support right now during remote learning. And then finally, our third goal, learn, is just all about our academic focus. So this year, we're specifically focused on improving outcomes for our students of color, our ELD students, and our students receiving special education services. The way that we're focusing on this, this, on this goal is that we're trying to develop some teacher changes that will translate into academic growth for our students. So this is our first year in the building of co-teaching in ELA and math. And so in building those partnerships, we have a team of teachers, another teacher leadership team called our Instruction for All Committee, and they have been designing small pieces of our professional development and using universal design concepts for all, for all of our teachers. We're focused on aligning our PLCs, and this transition to remote learning has been a catalyst for collaboration and developing common lesson plans for our PLCs. And again, thank you for the opportunity to present around our care, belong, and learn priorities.
Thanks Allison. Kathleen from Image.
Hi, I also want to thank the board and Superintendent Merlino for providing me an opportunity to share a little bit about Image. And I also want to have a shout out for our Image staff and our Image families because I think they have all learned the true meaning of flexibility, and I just greatly appreciate our community. I first want to talk about our equity goals during, you know, our, our goal of course is to create access for all of our students. And during our remote learning this year, our set team did a fabulous job. We met daily and looked at the student engagement and participation data and really worked hard at bringing in all of our kiddos. And by the time we got out of our set groups, all of our at-risk kids and our moderate-risk kids had opportunity to come in and be served in person. And while we didn't get the increase in student engagement that we had hoped, we did see that our kiddos that came in and were supported by staff did do much better on their, the days that they weren't in here. So it was, it was great having them in here and, you know, helping them access the technology was a huge piece actually because of, we had a few little glitches here at Image with our new building, and a lot of our kids just, they just couldn't get connectivity. So that was, that was an awesome experience to have. The other thing is that we we recognize that we have a lot of work to do yet in X, providing access to our kids. And as we do win more with the district and courageous conversations, there have been times where we've actually felt shame, you know, we know we can do a much better job. And we are really grateful to the district leadership for providing us the support and everything we need to guide us through this process. We also look at equity through the lens of social emotional learning. And this year, our school counselor has done an amazing job at helping our kids adjust to the new world around them. She brought in some curriculum, it's called Choose Love Curriculum in a Brave New World, and it was written by a nonprofit group. And one of the, the people that helped write the curriculum happened to be a mom of a student that was killed during Sandy Hope. And so she really works at helping kids recognize their feelings and having a growth mindset. And so we've noticed some real benefit to having that curriculum in our, with our kids this year. We are really focusing on the three signatures of social emotional learning that create the strong classroom community. You know, we have our zones of regulation that we continue to work with, helping our kids recognize their feelings and, and, and learn how to recognize the signs of when they're coming out of, you know, being out of control. And we've seen some huge gains with some of our students using that curriculum. And our PBIS, we continue to have high common expectations for our students, and we really work hard to celebrate their successes. We are excited this year about our New Founders and Penel curriculum. We'd kind of gotten into it last year. The resources that are provided, the, the literature is so rich, and it really lends itself well to incorporating diverse culture and ethnicity. And it helps kids, you know, see themselves in books and connect to the reading. And we're, we're looking really forward to getting more into that, into the book clubs. And this year, I'm not sure who was responsible for it, but we're really very appreciative for the new additions in our library. There are hundreds of books that not only look at culture and ethnicity, they look at gender and all sorts of of different things that our kids can relate to. And so we're excited about having them get into our building and be able to access those resources. We also this year have done a work, a lot of work like we all have around in our professional development sessions. And like most of us, we have equity teams that come together and we look at the modules that the district provides us around courageous conversations. And we tailor it for our building needs. And it's been interesting to see like how we're evolving. Some of our teachers are doing really well at seeing, you know, the disconnect, like we brought, we had them bring in their student data and we looked at it and asked them, could they predict the outcome by, by demographics or by race? And some of them were able to see that connection and really see the importance of, well, we need to fix this, right? And then we have some that are still evolving, but I know that if we continue the work we're doing through our courageous conversations and the support that we're getting from our district leaders, that we will make, we'll definitely make progress. We have a language, a language specialist this year in our building, and I can't say enough about her. She has done an amazing job of reaching out to our school communities and different groups along with our, our FCRC coordinator, tons of home visits and outreach, just trying to pull people in and help them access and, and have everything that they need to be successful here at school. We are so fortunate to have our kids back. I cannot thank the board enough for allowing us to do this because if you could see their faces, and maybe you have had a chance to go in and see them, but particularly at Image, we have a new school and just the light in their eyes and their smiles. I love giving tours, like today, we gave tours to our third graders, and they haven't really gotten to see the building because we have to kind of keep them in their little cohorts. But when we have done the tours, they are so excited. And I, I just know they're going to take huge pride in our school and in themselves. And so I'm very, very grateful. It's an exciting time to be in education, and I'm looking really forward to the progress that we're going to make in our, our community here.
Thank you very much. Okay, Tracy, you're up from Hearthwood.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me be here to share our story at Hearthwood. I am super nervous tonight. However, I always look forward to this evening because I live, listening to what everybody else has to say. And I always love to share about our wonderful children and stuff here at Hearthwood. So our journey in equity this year particularly is really thinking about access for all of our children, and what does that look like? And how can we make it happen for everybody? And, and really thinking about each child individually and what the needs are and how we're meeting those needs for each individual child. So when we think about access for our kiddos, and it started in March, obviously, as we go remote and making sure that all of our children had access to Chromebook and that they were able to log in. And then this year, the same thing, but lots of so many home visits with whether it was our associate as a principal and myself, our FCRC coordinator, our counselor, our school psychologist, class teachers, everybody making an effort to reach out to our families to see what's happening and that they're not being able to access. Is it that there's not technology at home? Is there not Wi-Fi? Do you not understand? And really just checking in to see how everybody's doing. And I think COVID has been hard for everybody, but there are so many bright spots that are coming from COVID when I think about what has changed within just our thinking process and how we approach access. So the fact that we have reached out to and have been able to have this connection with families that we haven't had before is amazing. Just that families can call anybody and get the help that they need. And they feel comfortable coming into Hearthwood. And that has been a long road that we have worked really hard on it, that all people, all, everybody are welcome at Hearthwood. And that it's been a long journey for our families to feel as though they're welcome, the school's open, and even though our doors are closed, our school is still open over here for you. So that, that was our big, big thing. We saw a huge increase in attendance with our children even remotely because I believe of this attention to making sure that everybody's okay. And the access was available for all, whether it be hotspots or even our secretaries were jumping in, this is how you get into Google Classroom. This is what it looks like now. When you get into Google Classroom, you have to go to this tab, and that's easy to do that. So everybody was making sure children had access to learning. And then thinking about the high quality of learning and just the belonging in the classroom. So knowing that our children were far away, and they're all in their own homes, that we are guests in their homes, teachers were super cognitive of just creating that wonderful culture that happens probably much easier, maybe, I don't know, in the classroom than it would remotely. They spent a lot of time making sure that happened even remotely. So now as children come in, amazing, it is amazing to have them. And Kathleen, I agree with us, the best days ever since January, and the children are on campus. The, as they come in, that, that culture has to be created again, because it's a different space, but there's half of their children are there. And they have a few classrooms because some of them are remote and some are in person, and then there's only half of them there. So, but that has happened much easier because of the connection that teachers have been able to make with their children and their families. So thinking about access is, is just amazing, but also thinking about reaching and, and reaching and teaching each individual child as we move along and thinking about what those specific needs are for each child, knowing what our end results are as far as standards go. But then thinking about, what's this child coming in with today? Thinking about trauma-informed practices, and thinking about just the whole child, and I don't know how to say it at the moment, but knowing SEL, knowing that it's important that we, oh, well, and knowing that all of us probably are dealing with at least some form of anxiety and possibly some form of trauma at this point based on our COVID society. So teaching through all of that and making sure that children's needs are met here at school. Our FCRC has been amusing at supporting families and making sure that we are connecting and making sure that people and children are connected. And I have to put it out there, our kitchen manager has been fantabulous at making sure all of our families are fed and that they understand that they can come at any time, that the windows are open and get the meals that they need for their families. We have families coming from all over. We were feeding over 350 this summer. So she's done an amazing job at making sure, again, that access is there for, for all. I have this long list of things, but the other piece that we're seeing is, and, and watching kids come to campus, his kids haven't been in school, they haven't been in the classroom, they haven't been in the school for 10 months. And that, almost 11 months. And so you think, that didn't hit me until they started coming back in January, and they have grown. Our little biddies have grown so much within that time, it made me realize how long, I mean, it's about like years and years. But it did make me realize how long it's been since we've had children in classrooms in school building. And how excited they are to be back. And we, I asked them, every day I've asked, what's the best thing about being back at school? What are you most excited about being back at school? And there are two things they always say, being in class with their teacher and being with friends. But thinking about that social aspect, but then thinking how important the teacher is to our children and their learning. And that has become not just to the children, but to the families because we're, we're guests in their home. And, and again, it goes back to ensuring that access for all. I have lots more I can say, but I will end my time. Thank you.
Thanks Tracy. All right, Stuart, you're up and running. What's going on at Fur Crest?
I'm glad you said Fur Crest because I thought I was either Orchard or Riverview.
You're moving.
I'm, I'm moving around. I would also like to say thank you to everyone, the board, Mike, the CNI team. You know, when we first heard you know, when we first heard that we were transitioning to um, in-person learning, there was a lot of uh, at least for me, a lot of anxiety. Um, however, um, with the heavy lifting uh, that our CNI team did, uh, made it smooth. And, and the transition to have our K and one start off and then go to second and third and so on. We had the systems down. So just like uh, what everyone else is saying, it's so awesome to see the kids um, at school. I also want to give a shout out. Um, after school today, I was making my way um, into the building and I was talking with one of our uh, full remote teachers. And he pulled me aside and he said, hey, I just want you to look at this tool that I'm doing. And I just um, had a moment of uh, just kind of pause and, and I just appreciated that he showed me the tools that he was doing. Um, and the heavy lifting that there, our remote teachers are doing for our kids and families who choose to stay remote, because I think that's important. Um, that we um, of course, our doors are open for those who want to come in and also um, our computers are open too, for that um, learning to um, help um, our kids to receive the best education. Um, our, our theme this year at Furcrest is let kindness ripple. Um, and that's because what's going on in the world today, as we know, and I know it's simple, we always talk about kindness. Um, we always talk about being kind, uh, but we want to make sure we, we ripple it out of Furcrest. We ripple it out of Vancouver, Vancouver, we ripple it out of uh, Clark County and so on. That one uh, small touch can make an impact in many different lives and that's what we need to do and model that. Um, one other analogy I just wanted to uh, talk about is just something that uh, we've talked about with our staff this year. And it's not my analogy, uh, staff here is a lot of analogies uh, from me. Um, but I heard this analogy once about um, some people trying to move a grand piano. And they were having trouble moving it. And our um, what I, what the staff here hears me saying of lift where you stand. And that's what someone said when they were trying to lift this grand piano. They said, stand together and lift where you stand. And um, because the CNI team, um, our staff, um, many of us have, have worked hard um, to lift, lift where you stand. And we wouldn't have been able to be here and to help our children receive the education that they deserve without our, our phenomenal um, Evergreen staff. So I just wanted to uh, say that. Um, I, uh, right along with what um, others have been saying, I think a big word that we've been talking about is access to learning. Um, a huge another uh, word that we come across is asset-based thinking for all learners. Um, so that's been a focus and of course, uh, our courageous conversations um, around race and equity. Um, I can tell that as we started this work around courageous conversations, um, it's been hard. Um, and it's difficult to have these uh, conversations. Um, and I would say for me as a leader, um, it's been hard for myself, but hopefully I, I am modeling uh, what that practice looks like. So we can be comfortable talking about this. And like others have been saying, is talk about our own racial um, biography and, and going into that. We came up, we, with our equity team, our, with our um, school leadership team, we came up with a equity statement that guides um, uh, what we do. And we, it says, we will partner with all members of our school community to encourage equity by inviting, asking, listening, acknowledging and responding to all voices. And one of the things that I can tell that our staff is um, one of the words that keep on coming up right now within the equity statement that we tend to live by, um, is the word listen. Um, we just want to listen to especially our um, different cultures. Um, our families of, of different colors, um, especially our, our black community. We had uh, Clarissa come and speak to um, our school leadership team, uh, just because we wanted to listen, we wanted to learn from her, her own story. But also how that story connected to our district's vision. Um, on top of that, we also um, listened to one of our uh, staff members who is a person of color and she um, also did a phenomenal job. So we're just kind of li- listening and learning and, and just really learning how to have these courageous conversations um, amongst ourselves. Um, one of the other questions that we asked about access, you know, we said, you know, do our students have access? Do the, do our students have what they need to access the remote learning? What about the internet? What does teaching and learning look like in a remote setting? And what does partnering with parents look like now? Um, again, how can we listen better to our families? Um, one of the things that we uh, came up with, we came up with something called uh, Coco and Conversations. Um, and that was just listening and partnering with our parents. Um, this whole remote thing was new to all of us and especially our parents who now we are partnering side by side. So what does that look like? So um, every Wednesday, not, uh, yeah, every Wednesday for a little bit, we would um, open up a Zoom and we would just ask, uh, we'd have a little presentation. And we would just um, listen to our parents and um, just respond to their questions. Um, a lot of the questions. And then what we ended up doing, we tailored it. So we had um, one of the sessions was on technology. How to keep our kids safe, uh, using Common Sense uh, Media, that platform. Uh, one was on uh, Zones of Regulation. Um, you know, we heard a lot of our parents saying, um, what we need right now, we need skills because our kids are having um, concerns with, you know, staying engaged. Um, how do I get them to attend, you know, sit still? And so we would, um, we did that and just by partnering with our, our families. And so um, our, our number one goal, and I won't talk a lot about it because I didn't write it, I didn't include it in this part, was engagement and core um, instruction. That was one of our goals this year as a staff. That's kind of a, um, I always tell our staff a moving target, um, because it's, you know, what is, what is remote learning look like in like a, in a setting? What is remote learning 2.0 look like? What is small groups and um, reading look like? Um, we're just trying to move as the more information we learn from our CNI team, how do we help uh, get that um, to our staff and, and, and little by little. Um, but again, how are we responsive uh, to our kids? Um, one of the things I want to uh, focus in on is our goal about um, using achievement level descriptors, or we call them the ALDs to deeply know our language learners and their needs. Something that we're really trying to do at Furcrest this year is just really lay the foundation of getting to know our English language learners. Um, right now we have about 20%, 77, 78 uh, kids out of, it's right now, we have a total of 393 kids. We're down a little bit, of course, um, in um, enrollment. But we want to lay that foundation of what does um, through the lens of reading, writing, speaking and listening, what is it like a level one, level two, level three, level four uh, kiddo look like? Um, who's exhibiting to certain behaviors in speaking and reading. And so um, our goal this year, and I'm glad we didn't bite off more than we can chew. Um, is to really lay that foundation, is to really understand our English language learners. Um, and I mean, it helps out all of our learners. So we're going to under, help our staff understand that. And then next year, um, I don't know quite yet what we're going to do, but we'll do something around, of course, uh, English language learners. And maybe we'll jump more into the shelter instruction practices, but I'll have to uh, talk with, um, of course, our, our team. Um, who, and I just want to give a shout out to um, who I, I believe they're, they're here. Um, because there's no way that um, I would hope I would never say I in this sentence because it's, it's a team effort. It's we who um, we do this for um, our kids. So um, that is the, the Furcrest story. Um, and as we're ever evolving too. So thank you.
Thanks, Stuart. Okay, Lauren, what's going on at Endeavor?
Thank you, Victoria. Good evening to all the board members and Superintendent Merlino and all others here tonight. Thank you for giving um, us our time to share a little bit about our school. Um, we're sure this has been a challenging and different year. Yet I think that there's a silver lining to it because we've been able to lean into our equity work with our commitment for change. Uh, inclusiveness has always been an important characteristic here at Endeavor and one that we've worked to develop and maintain since we opened Endeavor 12 years ago. Whether it's our special ed students, socioeconomic, race, creed, color, ethnicity, national origin, religion, sexual orientation, gender identity, language, height, weight, age, uh, physical or mental ability, we strive to embrace and respect all at Endeavor. And so this year I challenged the, the entire staff to not just say our equity statement, but live it, wear it, show it in our actions with our students and families. And this is a big challenge because our staff doesn't look like our families. Or do we have life, uh, similar uh, life experiences? And the majority of them don't see or understand the challenge of this when it comes to serving our students and families. We're getting there. It's a work in progress. So in May, we announced the need for a living equity team. And the team was all volunteers, 16 people, including our associate principal and myself. Four classified and 10 certificated staff made up the equity team. Excuse me. We met during the summer doing a book study on white fragility by Robin D'Angelo. It was impactful to say the very least. We took a deep dive journey of the head and heart and explored our biases and challenged our own personal beliefs. We all came away bonded together with a new commitment to our staff, our students and our families. And um, from these uh, meetings, we morphed into three cadres, still under the equity team, but three qua- cu- cadres that drive our school beliefs and actions. And our goal to be culturally responsive to all families and students through our three focus teams. Professional development, outreach and student voice. And then um, I'll share a couple, uh, a few intentional moves that our cadre plan. Um, of course, we did the book study and we're still um, going through each chapter with the whole staff. And our cadre leads each small group. We also created an equity resource library and read articles around the equity. Which is why our uh, the book study, we plan on finishing it in uh, March. Um, administration, we met with every grade level, every group and entity um, in the school to reflect as a team, to monitor progress and to hear what they're thinking around the book study with white fragility. I wanted to be clear and not miss one person in our school. One compass pointing in one direction. Uh, every staff meeting, we've always opened up our staff meeting, sharing something that exemplifies compassion. And we now include reading aloud our equity statement by a different staff member each meeting. Um, we continue to meet with our Russian and Spanish parents monthly over Zoom to answer questions and build relationships. Our first meeting with our Hispanic parents, 20 parents came, 18 to 20 parents came. The last meeting, this last month, um, 30 parents came. And the, the interest just keeps growing. So um, that's reaching out to them. So we're excited about that. Uh, before school, we messaged every parent, letting them know we'd have translators here at the school to assist them with questions and registration. I wish we were that smart 12 years ago. And even longer than that when I was at Image. Because we had so many parents coming here to use the translators, our Russian translators, our Spanish translators. There was a lineup because so many parents had so many questions. And so we're going to do this every single year. Um, let's see, in October, we had an Endeavor Fill Your Bucket Parade for our families. And that was a good success, huge success. Our staff PD continues to focus on equitable teaching practice that best serves all students through using ESI, elementary sheltered instruction. We realigned ourselves to the checklist for preparation and teaching of lessons. Um, so those are a few things. I want to share, I guess in closing, just our thinking today. So we understand everyone has differences and we value and embrace those differences. The diversity of our community makes us richer and stronger. We are learning to be more intentional in how we support students at Endeavor rather than looking at our students with broad strokes. We, we are trying and starting to see how individual students and families are affected by the data collection and decision-making that occurs in our school and in our educational system. We are constantly asking ourselves if this is what is best for students. We must de-center our focus from our own functional knowledge of running a school and position ourselves with the student and the family and what they value. And help school work for them. Not trying to make them fit into our way at Endeavor and the school system. So that's where we're at today.
Thanks, Lauren.
Thank you, Victoria.
Okay, now we're going to have Rebecca sharing with us what's going on at Burton.
Hello, good evening, school board and Superintendent Merlino. Um, I'm really excited to share the work um, of our staff at Burton this year. Our staff and our families have been rock stars throughout this pandemic and um, I've continued to focus on um, what's important um, for our students. Um, although the pandemic has had lots of, created lots of challenges for us, it also has given us lots of new opportunities. We've had the opportunity to build relationships with our families and our students in ways that we haven't before. We've learned to appreciate how much we love uh, just being in school and reaffirm what we love about education and being educators. At the beginning of the year, our school um, staff chose the theme for the year and what we chose was we got this. And we've definitely had to remind ourselves of that lots of times throughout the years as we, or throughout the year as we've um, you know, embraced new changes and taken, tackled new challenges. But we did um, maintain some of the same goals in our, as our school improvement plan for last year. The overarching goals were very similar. Um, as we shifted to distance learning, we continued to focus on equity in literacy instruction by focusing on consistency and practice. Our focus kind of shifted to planning together as a team, um, what should be asynchronous and what should be synchronous. Um, making sure that all of our students were experiencing a similar um, instruction within the grade level. And also just using the expertise of the whole team and the skills of the whole team to make the um, education for all the kids at the grade level the um, the best it could be. Um, we, we had focused, we were, had been focusing on having meaningful work as part of the workshop and we continued that as well. It's really important that the kids have meaningful work during distance learning because um, otherwise they really don't want to do it, they don't engage in it. So we need to make sure they understand how the work that they're given is making them smarter and getting better at um, learning. Um, and so we had to think about planning for meaningful work and um, providing all the needed support that kids are going to need um, at home, especially our um, language learners. So our leadership team um, shifted a little the way we did instructional rounds this year because we did them in virtual classrooms as well. And um, we were looking for evidence of the practices that had been, that we've been working on. And we also wanted to find ways to encourage our staff and and notice and name all the great things that they're doing. Um, so we did rounds every week and throughout the rounds, we did see some trends in um, in what students were doing. Lots of reading and engaging in conversation around text, making meaningful um, contributions to discussions. Teachers were Teachers were doing a great job of utilizing their small group instruction time and meeting with small groups of readers. And so our next steps were just focusing on having worthy work during their times that they're not with in class. And also more embedded opportunities for formative assessment. How do we know that the kids are learning and, and acting on that? So over the summer, we had several book studies that were well attended by our staff. They were optional, but you wouldn't have known that based on the attendance. The focus was on culturally responsive teaching and racial equity. We looked at three different books, White Fragility, Culturally Responsive Teaching in the Brain. And then we read a, a nonfiction, or I mean, a fiction children's book called Ghost Boys. That was also a good topic of, a good catalyst for discussion. These book studies were impactful and created an opportunity for both individual growth for students or for staff in understanding their own biases and also a commitment to racial equity among the staff. Our second goal this year is around belongingness. We know that relationships are the most important keystone to learning. So we want to make sure, we want to make sure that all of our students feel connected to their teachers and to Burton as a school community. And we knew that that was gonna be even a new challenge with the remote environment. We want to make sure that students know that there are many adults that care about them and that we're all on their team. And so this was, this was, you know, a super important with them being not with us. So I feel like building relationships has always been a strength of our staff. But we did have to find some new strategies to connect with our students virtually. And through our instructional rounds, we did see teachers using all those signature SEL practices, the three practices. We saw a lot of engagement in community circles, which were strategies that we had been working on. And we tracked the students' engagement and participation with our set team daily up until this transition to in-person learning. And we had different levels of intervention based on where the challenges were. Some of them were school level interventions and some of them were, were teacher level interventions. And so we worked hard on creating some good interventions that would engage students positively. And so now that we're shifting into in-person learning, we're continuing our focus on meeting our students' SEL needs and incorporating those culturally responsive practices in our instruction. So much like my colleagues, Burton has had a strong focus on equity this year. We're grateful for the courageous conversations training and the district's support of looking at data through an equity lens. We conducted the equity audit this year. And one of the big areas of focus we came away with is wanting to work on some parent connectivity. So we want parents to feel like they have a voice in our school. We, we want to hear from them. So we worked with Clarissa to create a survey for parents to guide our next steps in this work. We have it translated and ready to go. We kind of wanted to time it after we transitioned to in-person learning because they've been getting a lot of emails lately. We don't want them to miss the survey. We want them to be able to take the time to fill it out. And so it should go out next week. We're really anxious to hear from families and parents and get started on our action steps with engaging parents. So thank you for the opportunity to share our work with you tonight. I do want to thank the CNI team as well as my, like my colleagues did and the district leadership. You know, this is no small task, you know, shifting to in-person learning. And the, the support we got from them made it happen. So like today's Groundhog's Day and it, it felt like Groundhog's Day because we had our sixth first day of school today. And we have finished up our, now everybody has come to school. And we've, we've seen everyone's smiling faces behind their masks and their excitement. And despite all the regulations we have to keep everyone safe, they are happy and thrilled to be at school and we're thrilled to have them. Thank you.
Thanks Becky. Janet, let's hear about Home Choice Academy.
Absolutely. Well, thank you, as everyone else has said, School Board members, Mike Merlino, District Office Leadership for the opportunity to come and share about Home Choice Academy. So I'm going to kind of put around our two goals, working on effective instruction from last year and continuing this year, as well as in the Equity Lens Family Engagement. And now I'm gonna talk to you about the then and now. At Home Choice Academy, we saw a large increase in enrollment this year from our one hundred and fifty-seven, that was estimated to, our high was two hundred and sixty-five in December. And so that increase in numbers also was a huge increase in the number of staff. So certificated alone, we had seven and a half staff last year. This year we have thirteen certificated. And what that is affording us with this growth in student population is the ability to start building a system-wide approach to our effective instruction and a system-wide approach to the equity and family engagement. Because in our building and program, our families are taking on the partnership of being a learning coach at home. And so with this large increase, we've really been working on, how do we beef up and shift the way the full remote program is being kind of handled on a day-to-day basis? And because that's almost sixty percent of our overall population is our full remote learners. And so we've gained, and this is a shout out to our district. Since last June and up through December, I have gained staff from Crestline, from Cascade, from, not Cascade, Y East, from York. And then from Burton. And then hired a full-time counselor. And the people that came from in-district over here to Home Choice Academy have been hot-notch, have been so enthusiastic, even though their life had totally been flipped upside down. And they just jumped right in and have kept the ball moving smoothly. Helped to, it's created such richer and deeper conversations within our professional development. Because it's bringing in perspectives from the outside and widening it from five to seven people at a meeting to now they're sixteen to twenty-five when we include certified staff. So I just, I look at this year and all the shifts that everybody's been doing. And when we look at effective instruction and when we look at family engagement, the first thing comes down to building the positive and supportive relationships with the students and with the family. And our kids, for the most part, are thriving. We do have a number of kids that we identified from the beginning of this fall and are still identifying on the student engagement team to get them coming to school. And today, I think when I wrote up my mid-year snapshot, we had six middle school kids identified and only three were coming. Today, we had six kids show up and five of them were brand new. And because we're looking at the equity lens and wanting to make sure that just because parents have signed up for our program, not all parents are capable or able to be that learning coach at home, which we would want at Home Choice Academy. But we're looking at, how do we make sure all of our kids are benefiting from the education and the support? And so in looking at our progress monitoring, you can see from the fall I Ready scores till winter, we are on the upwards trajectory in reading, ten percent K eight from fall to winter. And a math is thirteen percent K eight. I have to tell you, the caveat is the highest number of kids that are showing in green, as you would probably expect, are K through two kids. When we get up into our middle school population, that percentage is flipped. And so there are more kids that are needing interventions and additional support than there are kids that are performing right now at grade level. And that ties into our discipline, disciplinary, I can't even say it at this time, Discipline Proportionality Report. Where the kids that have come to us were struggling in school to begin with. And so what we're trying to do with relationships, with having effective instruction through the systems that we put in place, what's gonna be taught at the core level. And then now that we have a halftime academic interventionist, then we can start looking at that tier two and tier three. And so I really think with adding all of our staff, working with our students, working with the parents, we're turning into a program, as I heard Lauren talk about, let's provide the education that the families need, rather than trying to fit them into what our educational program is. And I think we're filling a gap and we're continuing to grow and learn within how to help support families, not only if they want to come here, but also to help support families if this isn't the right program. Because I have at least two families to call this weekend. Really have the dig-deep conversation of, we want to help your child learn, but there's no evidence that the learning is happening with any of the curriculum and the assessments. And so whether or not it's time to look at going back to the neighborhood school with having kids being on-site two days a week. So at Home Choice, we're trying to wrap around all of our neighboring schools and support each other so that the kids are the ones that win at the end. So thank you again for the opportunity for sharing.
Thanks Janet. Okay Heather, we saved the best for last. What's going on at Legacy?
Tons of great things are going on at Legacy. Good evening, everybody. It's good to see everybody's faces. I feel like these might be faces I don't normally see on Zoom, so this is a nice little change of pace. So as those who were lucky enough to read the SIP plan, we didn't do a lot of changing to our SIP plan this year. I put the analogy in our status update. It's like when you're on a ship and you're leaving port and you have a destination in mind and you chart your course and you set it. And then along the way, you may need to change a few times to go around weather or to like restock supplies, but your final destination doesn't change. And we view our SIP goals in that same way. And our destination didn't change, but the changing conditions necessitated a brief change of course. And so we did add a goal to our student success goal too, which was increasing student engagement in remote learning. We said by ten percent because we, we want to be able to measure it. The unfortunate part is it's really hard to measure that with the remote learning from last year because a lot of students who would not have passed actually got passing grades based on the recommendations from OSPI. But we have been doing a really good job on that. And then we are still continuing with our Legacy Five Promises, really focusing on literacy across the content area. I do want to share just some of the really awesome bright spots that we are seeing at Legacy right now. Our F rate, when I last checked, our final grades aren't due until next Tuesday, is currently down ten percent from 2020. We were at nine percent two weeks ago. I suspect will be around five percent at the grading period. Our four-year graduation rate increased almost fourteen percent last year. Obviously, there's that asterisk there because we did have that little bump from some of the ability to waive credits and some of the grad recs that we were having a difficult time with students once they went to remote learning. We have re-engaged sixty-five students who had been disengaged from high school since we started our Open Doors program. And that means sixty-five students who did not have high school diplomas graduated with a high school diploma. And we expect we'll have about, and I actually think we're probably gonna be toward thirty-five by the end of this year. So that's really awesome news. The other part of our good news, when we think about engaging our students in the remote learning is, on January tenth, when we looked at our data, we had fifty-five percent of our Legacy students had accessed in-person supports at some time during that first semester. And when I looked today at that data, we're actually getting closer to almost seventy percent of students who have accessed coming to campus and getting help. We have on average between fifteen and twenty students every single day at Legacy working. And so that is something we're really proud of and supporting those students. The equity work we have embedded into this year, which has been really great because it, it fits with what we're already doing. And what we've done is we've, our team made the decision to, to embed the equity work within the work we are already doing with our professional development. Because the team felt as though if we can't get our staff to really address the inequities that are going on in our classrooms in things like grading and expectations and classroom management and discipline patterns, then there's really no way we can expect that focus on equity, the equity to go beyond those classroom walls and to enact a change on a larger scale. So we've embedded this into the stuff that we're already doing, talking about common grading practices. And we are working toward that and really examining, is what we are doing helping or hindering our students? And how can we provide a consistent experience as far as grading and what that looks like across the board for our students? And, and then experience that is more equitable. And so using, like Danny had mentioned, the Joe Feldman book, Grading for Equity, that is a text we are using bits and pieces of. And then our anchor text actually for our equity this year, just throughout the year, is Me and White Supremacy, which was suggested by one of our group members. And we are doing it as part of our staff meetings that we hold twice a month and then our early release also. And so, let me, I'm just trying to look at some of the notes that I had, right? Talk about our F rate and our student learning. So the, the remote learning really gave us an opportunity to kind of pause and look back on what we did last year and look at our data and think about how we continue that forward. And what we're doing is really planning for next year and really, again, thinking, like, how do we bring this equity into our classrooms for our students? And one of the things we've really talked about is thinking about using collective efficacy and creating a standardized assessment system so that we can think about the educational instructional lift that we are putting forth in our classrooms. And how do we measure that? What does that look like? What does that data look like? How do we know that that's what's happening? And what do we keep, tweak or abandon in our classrooms? And part of that is using things like standards-based planning, doing some more focus on, again, what are we having students do? Do we have levels of, of the descriptors? And do students know what they're working toward? And so embedding that into our work. And we are just continuing it throughout the year. Our teachers are really making those connections with our, our students and trying to create that personal capital and that social capital. So when they come back to us, we can get back to the, the hard work that's gonna happen. I think when we get back to school, which is a lot of emotional and socio-emotional work that's gonna have to be done with students across the board. And, but we're looking forward to that work and, and our staff is just doing an amazing job. They have really powered through and all of our staff come to campus two days a week and work with students one-on-one so that we're getting that extra help for them and helping them be successful and, and keeping them engaged in the, not just education, but also in the, the relationships that we really focus on at Legacy. And we're excited about our new building. We were there today. It looks amazing. I can't even believe that we are going to be there in August moving in. And I just cannot be more thrilled about giving our students and our families this amazing school to come to every day to be proud of. And so I thank everybody again. I've thanked you for the last three years for that. But thank you again for, for really putting our students at the- our students at the, at the top of, um, the, the line for, for getting new, uh, a new school. So I appreciate that.
Thanks, Heather. We're excited for the school as well. Can't wait to see it.
Have you been there? Have you taken a look?
I haven't. I've just helped, helped them when they were picking out all the colors and different things, but I haven't been in the school yet. And I just am so anxious to see it all pulled together.
You all should come in March when we go. We should have this. I think that would be great to have the board come and just see just how beautiful that whole campus is with all the three schools. It's, it's just unbelievable. It's extraordinary.
Yeah, yeah, it's going to be great. Okay. Well, thank you, Heather. Um, so now we have, we're going to open things up for questions. I'm sure the board will have a few. Um, so go ahead. Who'd like to start things off?
I don't really have a question, but I'll go first real quick and just say that, um, I would just like to thank all of you for the tremendous amount of work that we know you are putting in and you guys are doing it, um, incredibly well. Uh, we couldn't have asked for anything better, um, and supporting your families, your students and your staff on top of everything else. So I, uh, I would just like to say thank you uh, so very much. And also, um, hearing every single one of you guys brought into that bright spot. Um, or what you have found to be the bright spot during all of this. And I absolutely love that because it's, you know, we can always just keep dreading on all of the bad stuff, but we got to find the bright side of some of these things. And I think that all of us have learned, uh, best practices through all this and are pulling away things that we would have probably never have had the opportunity to implement. So thank you, thank you, thank you for everything you guys are doing.
Thanks, Jenny. Rachel?
Hey, everyone. I don't have any questions, but I do want to thank you all for all your hard work and for presenting to us tonight. It's always interesting to hear what's been going on and see you guys like yearly essentially to get that update on how things are going and, um, yeah, I just really appreciate you coming. Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. Julie?
Yeah, um, thank you as well. I do have just a couple of quick questions. I don't know if they're really that quick. But, um, maybe first for Danny, because, um, I was super excited to read the article in the Columbian today about, um, sports in Clark County getting kicked off again in the high school uh, prep. And I know that some of the, uh, sports have started and some of the practices, um, which I am super excited about because it's been a long time. We had to cancel everything last spring. Um, I know a lot of our students look forward to that as well as other clubs and activities. So how is that going? And then maybe to, um, the second part of that for, um, elementary and middle school. What do we do to, because we have such good momentum going with after-school activities for our elementary students and middle school students? How do we regain that momentum moving forward?
Um, thanks, Julie. Yeah, uh, I will tell you that all of our kids and all of our coaches, um, and everybody really wants to get going. Um, uh, our, i- it's going really well. Um, all of our, our teams that are able to practice right now are practicing. Um, they're obeying all of the, the, um, COVID guidelines. And you know, in my conversations with coaches, it, it's going pretty well. Um, I mean, we're utilizing facilities differently than we've ever used, used facilities before. Um, and so, I mean, it's, it's pretty interesting to see all the different like pods of groups that are kind of rotate. Like today, we had volleyball rotating around the gym, um, in different pods. Um, uh, but you know, it, from, from my perspective and, and from coaches' perspectives, uh, I think it's going pretty well. Um, there, everybody's just eager to get back to a- actually being able to be competitive.
Yeah, I'll just kind of, uh, piggyback on Danny there. We have, um, at the middle school, I mean, our coaches are, are eager and questioning. We have, I've had, you know, we've been spa a couple of different things. Um, I'm sure that once we start.
Am I the only one experiencing some cutouts there?
No, you're not.
Sorry. Sorry, did you hear me?
No.
Not a lot of it, no.
Oh, okay. Um, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. I was saying, we've been running some of our groups virtually. So we've been doing, um, some of our clubs and activities, National Junior Honor Society, La Chispa, um, for the last few months. And I think those, uh, those students are really excited to get back in the building and start meeting in person and our coaches are really excited to start, um, working with kids again too. So as soon as, as soon as we're able, we'll get things rolling.
Good. Thank you, Allison. Anybody on the elementary side? Julie, did you have another question?
No, I was just going to ask if anybody from elementary wanted to, um, chime in on the, on the part about just getting activities back or what that might look like, or it might be a while. I don't know.
I'll pop in. Um, I think it might be a while. I, we haven't heard, or at least I haven't heard anything about it. But, you know, I was just listening to Danny and Allison and a couple of things I wrote down was, you know, I'm thinking, this is my own, own opinion. If we can do in-person learning, maybe there is opportunities to do small clubs. Um, we have some monies always given to us to do, it's about ten to twelve clubs, um, after-school clubs or before club, uh, before-school clubs. Um, and then track, of course, is a popular, um, activity in the spring. Um, and again, I don't know what the guidelines will be, but I, I think if we, if we're having in-person learning and we're following all protocols and at recess and everything, I think we should be able to have that opportunity because I know our kids really, um, enjoy those activities.
Our, our, uh, elementary schools have activities, um, or, you know, opportunities allocated to them based upon their enrollment. We've always done that. I think it's the, actually even in the teacher's contract. Um, and so we've been, I, I would say primarily focused in elementary, getting kids back in school. I do think that once we get to the point where we've had them back for a period of time and things start to kind of settle in, um, there isn't any reason that we can't consider this, uh, but we'd want to talk with the principals about exactly how they'd want to implement that. Um, in, in the middle school, we've talked a lot about doing intermural, like expanding intermural opportunities after school. And then from the perspective of actual sport competitions, kind of focusing on a track season that would occur likely after spring break. It's one that pretty much every grade has access to. Um, so we are conscious of trying to make sure that we're providing these opportunities for kids after school. At the same time, honestly, uh, I think it was, uh, maybe Becky who mentioned the fact that they've had six opening days um, over the last three weeks. And so we, we kind of, it, I know that elementary's been impacted earlier than everyone else. So, uh, I think the hope is we can kind of get into a little bit of a role, uh, with just having the kids coming in a couple of days a week and then start focusing. Cause I do know that there's demand for it. There's demand for everything. Um, my own, my own kids are so excited to be able to go back to school. My first grader's back in school. My fourth grader's not yet, but um, we, 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 we need to do everything we can to provide the opportunities. There's no question about it.
Thank you. Okay, Rob, you're up.
Oh, boy, here we go. I, I want to share the esteem and, and the gratitude that Jenny and Rachel and Julie offered. Um, I'm taking away some things, uh, just from the notes. I got about a page of notes from the, from the evening so far is, uh, um, hey, Charlie Domlti is leading equity at, uh, at Evergreen. And I know that guy. That's neat to see. Uh, I noticed from our participants list that Teresa Ort is attending and watching this meeting. And I wanted to just kind of call out to her because she was my daughter's fourth grade teacher and one of the, one of the people who engaged with us uh, and explained to us just how amazing she thought our daughter was. And it's always stuck with us and Rachel remembers. Um, I see gratitude for the library refresh, uh, for opportunities for in-person learning. It's really helping, uh, helping settle some of my anxieties about the transitions. Uh, I heard the root of behavior was deep-seated trauma. Um, I heard lift where you stand, which is an indicator to me that yes, in fact, Stuart did grow up in circumstances very similar to mine. Uh, I heard D-center focus from functional knowledge and position with student and family, adaptive families and, uh, Janet's fill out educational needs rather than fitting families into an existing model. These are hopeful things to me. I need to connect with parents. Me and White Supremacy. Thank you for the book recommendation. And a loose question, I guess, uh, for Mike that we don't need to answer at this stage in the budget development, but if translation services have that kind of demand, I wonder if we need to add, uh, some resources to that. But I have some specific questions for you. Uh, and this will go out to Heather and Danny and, um, oh, help me find, I've got the, I've got the pictures here. I'm trying to find the Cascade principle.
Allison?
Uh, Allison. This year, and I'm speaking in my role here as legislative representative from the board and, uh, a member of WASD's legislative committee with some connections that are possible for, for students. Maybe also Home Choice, since we've got K through eight there. They're conducting all their committee meetings remotely, which gives us an opportunity to bring them and their stories without the trip to Olympia. So there are no permission slips to sign and they're doing a lot this year around student and school safety, around internet equity. Um, contemplating additional funding support for wraparound services, pathway opportunities, graduation waiver requirements. Um, and they have consistently loved and, and lit up when they have testimony panels that include students. So it's a yes-no question, but do the names of any students come to your mind? Who would have an interest in advocating with their stories? Would they like to speak to some senators and representatives in Olympia? Are there teachers that would welcome a chance to prepare their classes for that opportunity? Yes or no? Danny?
Yes, and, and I'm happy to give a follow-up to that if you'd like, but yes.
Yes. Um, Heather?
You know it, Rob. And I have an extra copy of Me and White Supremacy in my office if you want to stop by and grab it.
That would be lovely. Thank you. Um, and, and, uh, in the K eight kind of realm, uh, do you have students who would like that opportunity? Cause they do, they do meet with younger students and, uh,
I think it-
It charms them.
A cascade. Uh, a cascade, I know that we have students who would love that. We had a principal's advisory team last year um, with a lot of students with a lot of different things to say. So, um, I'm sure I could get, um, that same group or a similar group of students who would really appreciate the opportunity.
Would you be willing, would you all be willing to bring the names? I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, Allison, maybe the girl that sent me the email about the internet concerns.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I'm looking at a few people laughing that are familiar with that. Uh, I mean, I'll leave that up to you, whether you think that would be appropriate or not.
Yeah, I'll reach out and see, um, if she still has a story to tell.
It would be nice even to share that story anonymized and paraphrased with those who are working on internet legislation. There's a lot of that going on. Um, so if they're too shy to speak and they still have a story, we can still represent them. But if you could bring the names of the students and teachers who are interested to, um, Brian Grimstead's attention, he's building some linkages for me and, uh, and for the rest of the board, uh, that we could, we could extend these opportunities. Um, and I would appreciate, I would appreciate your contributions there. So that's kind of the happy thought question. And did you have any more to say about that, Danny?
I was just gonna, whoops, I was just going to say, um, you know, we've got a, uh, competition government, um, team that competes in Olympia every year and they got, they actually got third place this year. Um, uh, but, uh, that's our, our AP government and politics class. Um, and they would pretty much all love the opportunity to do that. So.
Now, one of the things that we can do along those lines is connect them with, uh, a student pool that uh, Logan Andrus of WASD, he's part of their strategic advocacy team there and works through the state leadership organization. I'm blanking on the, on the actual acronym or abbreviation there, but it's, uh, the ASB, uh, statewide leadership uh, group, uh, and can teach them how or guide them into the issues that they're passionate about. Um, so if they want to sign up for his email list, I can send those links through Brian out to you.
Right.
That's all right. Yeah, I appreciate hearing that. Um, that's sort of the happy thing. And then my other questions had to do with anxieties. You know, we've heard from staff in our board meetings, um, and parents, lots of emails, uh, who asked for work from home conditions, uh, and, and expressed their anxieties about COVID nineteen and, and the dangers that they feel. Could you talk about roughly the fraction of your staff in the buildings, um, who, if you haven't reopened for in-person services, um, continue to express anxieties? Um, and those who have, as they've been receiving students, I think, I think I heard a lot of hope in what you had to say, but are the anxieties for those people dissipating as the work in-person continues? Maybe I could ask elementaries to speak a little bit about their experience there. Like I can see Janet nodding her head.
Yeah, um, so at Home Choice Academy, we have one classroom that's K one, one that's two, three, and one that's four, five. And I know one of the teachers had requested um, an accommodation for a full remote. However, there wasn't a medical need to fulfill that accommodation. And that teacher is back and that teacher is spot on with the kids, spot on with what they're doing and not sensing any sort of anxiety. It was more, as we know with kids too, the anxiety of the thoughts of what's going to happen is often worse than what actually happens when you get down to it. I think because we have great social distancing protocols, we have great, you know, building procedures and just consistency in how we do things. What I find is that even more so, it's like, here's the way we do business, the, the mischievousness of kids, I would say that would be the one downfall. You don't see that. Because it's like, okay, we come in, we have our mask on, we walk down the hallway, we use the hand sanitizer, we sit in our one table and we do our work. Um, so if anything, um, that's my one. I miss being able to have those individual conversations with kids about, hey, so what were you thinking when you stuck your foot out and tripped Johnny or whatever?
Mm-hmm.
Um, but the teachers that are here in the building, uh, my middle school teachers aren't here yet. And they, there's only one of the three of them that comes onto campus once in a while. Um, and so their level of anxiety is high, but those that are on campus, it's, it dissipates because they see how well-functioning the building is and the processes that the district has helped us to set up.
So the processes help you keep people calm and engaged. Would anybody else like to share a story? Move success or anxiety, Lauren?
I, yeah, thank you, Rob. Um, I just want to share that last week, instead of teachers coming in. Um, to say they were uncomfortable, we had, um. Our three title teachers coming in and begging to do small groups outside of the classroom. Because right now they can't do that. They have to stay in the classroom, but they're begging to meet small groups because they've been doing it through the set. You know, the set, um, pro, our set program. Um, and then we have all our special ed teachers. Having kids coming, sorry Jay, but they're begging to have them come more than two days a week. And then we had another group of teachers, oh, our first grade teachers, of course, right, Mike? Who want to have their whole class in there, all 20. Um, and I said, Scott, Scott gave a real straight line saying, no, no more than 15. So now they're simultaneously teaching. Um, online and then in class with 15 and they structured, you know, made a special, um. What do you call it? The schedule. So. Parents are bringing their kids in more than two times a week in first grade. And, um, we can't say no to that when we're following all the regulations, 15 kiddos. Per classroom and we have six first grade classrooms. So. We've been having a lot of kids come in from the beginning. We had up to 130 starting in October. At any given day throughout the day. And so turning to hybrid was just a natural evolution. And so keeping to the requirements, that's what's going to keep us healthy. And so the shields, the Plexiglas, six feet, you know, masks, washing your hands, every, all of that. Is going to keep us safe. As safe as we can be. So, um, it's not a bad thing to have people coming in and begging to have more kids come on, on not just two days a week, but three to four. And then they're asking if they can even do it on Wednesdays. So it's not a bad thing. Teachers are really excited to have the kids back.
It's, it's interesting, uh, to hear you talk about first grade like that. I, uh. I have questions about the middle school plan and I, somebody correct me if this is not a, a. A correct picture of, of how that's going to proceed when it comes time. Uh, but the sixth graders will come in first and then will they go home for a couple of weeks while the seventh and eighth get their orientation?
So what we have planned right now is that the sixth graders will come in, in their hybrid group A and then hybrid group B. On a Thursday and Friday. Okay, um, so they'll have all in, then the following week, they'll come on a day, hybrid group A and then B. Uh, and then on Thursday and Friday of that first full week, the seventh and eighth graders will come together at the same time, the hybrid groups. And then the next week, we'll just start the regular schedule. Everyone will be in class together.
Okay. So the, the sixth graders won't miss two weeks of instruction, they'll miss two days. Or four days.
Yes.
Or not as much.
Um, yeah, there will be, yeah, the, I mean, we're trying to work out, uh, how the remote students can access the learning during that time. Um, one of the days we're going to, uh, definitely just have the hybrid only students in there. Um, so that we can show them around, talk about building safety procedures, protocols, those type of things. And then the next day I think will be onboarding for all the sixth graders. Um, we're trying to, I mean, we're obviously trying to minimize any loss of instructional. I'm.
She's breaking up. So you're minimizing loss of instructional time and, uh.
I'm not sure what's happening.
It's just.
Yes, and focusing on. And, um. Safe us from SEL focused things, um, trying to welcome the kids back, some specific things to sixth graders. And our new seventh and eighth grade students to welcome them into our school.
Is there a? Is there a flex to accommodate? I guess kids in the sixth grade or whichever grade actually who, uh, really need to continue their in-person. Instruction. Is there something that, that your SET teams could? Uh, could notice while they're there, uh, or based on their, uh, remote learning records that. That could accord them an opportunity to stay in person rather than sitting home for those four days or. Uh, the fear that I heard was about two weeks of, of remote only, um, for sixth graders that doesn't sound like Cascades planning. Maybe Julie has a comment about whether what Allison is describing is the same at the other, uh, at the other five schools.
Yeah, all the schools are going to follow the same plan and the students, the sixth graders are only done and missed if we talk about what. Missed one day if of in-person learning, but their sixth grade teacher will just be producing on those days. In live remote lessons. So they're not missing live instruction. It just is going to look a little different whether they're accessing live instruction in person. Or that second week that Allison was talking about on the seventh and eighth grade day. They're not in person yet, but they will still be in person live on, sorry, not in person, will be live remote on those days.
Will they, uh, be simultaneous with the in-person students?
Well, those wouldn't have sixth graders in person on that day. So if they had a mixed grade class. Those are the details that the middle schools are still working out of what does it look like for the mixed grade classes? How are we orienting kids to the? To the schedule while still providing ongoing instruction. But we did from when I talked about it last week and then met with the middle school principals, it was shortened a week. So, okay, let's get kids in quicker. We can accommodate them a little bit quicker with this. So it will take, you know, six. Days basically of instruction.
Okay. Thank you very much for bringing that kind of clarity. I appreciate, I appreciate the refinement of the plans and the flexibility there.
And we'll get detail out. It's just there, you know, tweaking some things and then it's been a, a moving target of when that day is going to be as well, but we'll.
Yeah.
We'll get more detail out to everyone as soon as we have it.
Appreciate it. Okay. Thank you for your help. Um, I took a lot of time, so I'm finished.
Thanks, Rob. Um, I would like to, I want, I kind of want to pick up on what Rob was talking about with our elementary. Students and the feelings of the teachers. I, we didn't hear from too many of you and I. You know, we get a lot of information and we get a lot of people who want one thing and then one another, but I just really want to get a pulse on what. The teachers are feeling. And how are they handling being back in school?
So I can speak for image. Um, it worked out well for us. We had. Teachers that had, um, needed accommodations and we had just enough classes so that it, it worked out that they could. You know, that, that, that they could have those and still teach it image. The rest of our teachers, they, um. Uh, I, they had already gone to the union, I believe, and had a petition going wanting to come back. Um, before we were told that we can come back and there. I would say there, um, there's that one teacher here that is, is not happy to be here. So. I think, you know, it's like with a lot of things, the five naysayers are really, really loud and they are the ones that are heard versus. Really looking at what the majority of the group wants. And I feel confident in saying that the image teachers are very, very happy to be back at school.
Thanks, Kathleen.
I would agree that a large portion are glad to be back, but I do think there's still some, I know there's still some big anxieties, particularly, um. In our pre-K program right now. And I just, during our meeting, like 600 emails just came through, we need help, we need help, we need help. Just, um. And it's good. They're asking for support and help and I love that. Um, and really it is the concern, um. There is that all the protocols as far as the six feet, um, they're three and four years old. And they don't keep six feet apart, but as far as teachers go, masks and shields and. There's a large majority of our pre-K little three plays that are wearing masks. Um, a larger, a larger percentage than I think any of us thought would be able to, um. And keep them on because it is, it is a program, um, design. I mean, all of our children in there right now have IEPs and some of them, um. That doesn't mean they can't wear a mask, but for some of them it is a tactile sensory thing. And for others, it's just they've never had to. So it's a matter of, um, following that. And I think, um. And, and we'll get there, we'll get there for sure. Everybody loves having the kids back. That is not the question, but I do believe, um, there are still anxieties there. And that we're working through, that we're working through.
Stuart, your thoughts?
Yeah, I would, I would just ask that, or I would just say that, um, lunch was, uh. A, a concern with many of our, um, staff members. But I made it priority, uh, both our assistant principal and myself have been in, um, and watching kids eat. So I've been into a kindergarten class today. I was in with the fourth. And fifth grade and just kind of watched how the procedures and, um, you know, I haven't really asked the staff quite yet. Um, but the procedures and the safety protocols that they followed, um, were awesome. And the kids were just phenomenal of just following the, the rules of, um, when to take off their masks, how, you know, how to eat, th- those type of things, you know? Um, and so that was a big concern. Um, but I think again, like what people have been saying is because we're following the protocol, because we're doing all that, I, I think. Right now the, the anxiety has gone down. I haven't heard from many of our staff. But that was a, a big concern that our staff had.
Yeah, I can echo what my colleague said. I would say we had more, um, anxiety. Uh, maybe than some schools initially, but the law, um, as they come in, the anxieties kind of start to diminish. They see how safe it is and they, they get excited about seeing the students. Um, I think that waiting for a vaccine was some of, some people's anxiety. Some of them have family members that are. Um, have fragile health or, um, they have, you know, um, fear, like more fear of the virus. And so there's, there's. Different ranges of personal anxieties, but once they get in, they seem to be settling in well.
That's good. How are, how is the staff in general handling? The protocols and, because we have had a, a few people comment that people are following the rules, they're not wearing their masks and they're getting together for meetings without masks and stuff like that. What's your observations on that?
I feel like we are doing a pretty, a really good job. The one-way hallies were a problem to start because you have to lap the building a few times. So every time you want to go anywhere. Uh, but everybody, even the kids, like some of the children have to, when they go to the bathroom, then they have to walk around the office and around the library and back to their class and they're doing it. And everybody understands the reason why. Um, the white dots outside make a huge difference too for our kids. Um, but as far as, yeah, I, I'm done.
Thanks, Tracy. Just checking in to see if this, the adults are as compliant as the, um, students are when they get together on their.
For us, um, this is Danny. Um, for us, uh, obviously our, all of our kids aren't, aren't back yet, but, um. Our teachers have been in and out for, you know, various things and, and the student engagement teams and all that. Um, and generally we haven't really seen any, anything. Um, we've had to have a couple reminders. You know, mostly it's been, a- any kind of adults not being compliant has been like maintenance workers. Um, that are not part of our district, right? Like third party, um, and just a gentle reminder, but we haven't had any issues like that.
Thank you. Um, I would like to reiterate what the other board member said. I, we just can't even thank you enough for what you've had, for the work that you've put in to get us through this very challenging time and, um. I know we're all going to come out of this on the other end actually better than we ever were. And I, I just am so proud of all of you because I know this hasn't been easy. And it has been fraught with a lot of anxiety and concerns and. Moving targets and, and all of that. So just keep up the good work. We really recognize it. What you're doing and we really are proud of you. Thanks. Mike, did you have anything you wanted to add before we adjourn?
No, I would just agree with everything you've said. Um, I think back to. When we started making plans for returning kids in maybe June. And then the plans were revised maybe in August. So we're going to do this. And then we got to. September and October and we started thinking about, okay, well, now we're going to maybe do this. And then we, you know, it's like we, the group that you're looking at has been leading their buildings through. You know, iteration after iteration of a plan, chasing guidelines, chasing protocols, all of these things. And the reality is that there are still people that are very anxious about what's happening. Uh, and you all get to work and there's probably anxieties within the people that are on the screen as well with respect to the, the. The virus. So I would say I agree completely with everything that all of the board members have said and just thanking the, the principals. Uh, Rob mentioned Teresa Ort, who's here. I'm looking at the screen. Also I see Brandy Phelps is here from Furcrest. Need to mention her. Uh, and then Joe, I don't know who Joe is, but I'm going to call out Joe also because Joe's been here the whole night and he did it as well. Um, so I honestly, the, the, and, and I, I look at, I, I look at, uh, Julie and Aaron and. Jay and Ruth and, uh, Brian, you know, all, and if there's somebody I met, Lori, I mean, e- everybody's been through. So much. So I would say I agree. Yeah, we're actually starting to talk on meetings with OSPI. About the Department of Health relaxing the six feet requirement, like when will they relax the six feet requirement, which would then potentially allow us. At some point to come back in a more normal situation. So the idea that they're actually starting to have those questions come up and talking about that is very encouraging. In terms of hopefulness for next year, maybe even later this spring. So I would just. You know, usually I talk for 22 minutes, I'll stop at that. Thank you to everyone on the screen.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, great. Well, those of you that are not at home yet, be careful driving. I've been hearing lots of rain and wind on my windows here. So. Stay safe and, um, we'll look forward when we get to see you in person.
Same here.
This meeting is adjourned.